Here.
Alvin Rose.
Here.
Alvin, Alvin Wolf.
Here.
Alvin Al.
Here.
Alvin Stigler.
Here.
Alvin Wolf.
Here.
Uh, we're gonna just have one item tonight, presentation of the draft wastewater utility facility plan. Tim, you wanna do the introductions?
Yeah. Uh, so I know this is still a number of your representatives here, Jim Smith and uh, Leo from. Um, I just wanted to touch on a couple things first. Um, before the facility plan began. So it's been like a week and a half or something. Um, and as was noted previously, the facility plan document said a 20-year planning. So just keep that in mind, uh, as we go forward with, um, the highlights and that are included in this document. It'll be up to us working with our consultants and taking them into our territory on, uh, what way, um, of the facility plan. Uh, in regard to. Keep that in mind. Also, I urge to ask questions. Get questions tonight, please ask questions. If it doesn't come to mind tonight, um, and it comes to, uh, pops in your head tomorrow, next week, please reach out and ask them. But, uh, over and then.
Yeah, council is a discussion item, just introduction, so if you have anything, just jump in and ask questions. Uh, don't need to raise your hand, just jump in. Interactive session, thank you, if you could please introduce yourself and report what you have to share.
Absolutely, my name is Leo Cusack, Jim O'Toole, and I'm Jim Smith, uh, by Technologies. President of Block Technologies, view as, um, most. So without further ado, time, this is all about discussion, that's why we're here tonight, so. Sounds good. Let's jump right in. Tonight, we're gonna talk about wastewater treatment plant, we're gonna talk about facility planning effort, as Tim already introduced. Why we're doing facility planning, and then also what project or projects are gonna come in. Talk a bit about the scope, what those would entail, as well as costs, how that's gonna impact pay payers, and then ultimately then a schedule, how. So first, let's talk about community, which is a wonderful one, uh, my kids, uh, on the school here heard, why all that stuff? And so we spent some time here. It's a growing community, as you guys all know, and, um, I've got three different logos here on the screen, I've got the urban administration, we have SewerPAC, and then we also have City of Oklahoma. And all three have made estimates that are pertinent to, uh, what's going to be happening in this sewer service area, we think. So, um, we looked at the 2050 plan that you guys put together a while back, um, and we also looked at two documents or two sources of data that we are required to use by DNR. One is the urban administration, we're looking at the city proper, and then also because, uh, the sewer service area goes beyond just the city limits, we also look at SewerPAC estimate for what projected populations are gonna be, both the current and then obviously with design. Can we talk about design here, just for context? That's basically our 20-year, uh, into the future and where our crystal ball ends. Um, and so you can see overall, in whole, I think, first of all, first here, we've got about 5,000 people estimated, um, within the sewer service area by the year 2048, based on SewerPAC's data set, and so that's, uh, is in the rest of the conversation.
Leo, you mentioned about 20 years to 2040. 20 years.
Can you speak in the microphone?
Yes.
It's 20, it's 20 years from when the, any, any improvement. We were looking at 2020, that's why it's 2040, so, otherwise it's kinda like, where did the 2040, where did the 2040 come from?
What defines the sewer service area? What are we talking about?
Yeah, that's a good question, um, ultimately, that's based on, this is a SewerPAC graphic that you see in front of you, this is the last time it was amended. You actually see on the west side of town, uh, basically a couple of cache marks, uh, those have since been adopted as part of sewer service area. Uh, there's a little bit of two different orange colors on the screen, um, and this is, this is looking back a little bit, so it's kinda somewhat dated. But the darker orange, almost brown, is where sewer actually ran at the time of this graphic being published. The lighter orange is basically where sewer can run to at the time, and I'm sure this community that, uh, you guys were, there is part of, um, that's the lighter orange, which is now darker, just based on. Did that answer your question?
Yes.
Anything else before we move on? How do we start that, or we start? We're also talking a little bit about population, um, so what I'm showing you, this slide is current, about 101,000 or so, going up to about 26,000, so there's that, probably 5,000 more people within the sewer service area. Now, we're gonna start talking about water. Wastewater comes along. Key hourly flows are the kinds of flows that hit wastewater treatment plant when storms are coming hard. And what we're looking at here is current day, about 11.3 billion gallons per day over that first hour, that was that September 12, 2002. And 20 years out, uh, basis projection, we're looking at that decrease of about 14.2. I'm not showing you 2030 here because this is an important time period, that's what the plan is currently rated for us to cover the bases. And so we're going to hit a capacity limitation for key power wave, uh, somewhere within about the next five years or so. When we talk about.
Well, let us enter the course of the same.
Yeah, that, that's a good question, it's just a secondary axis, and so this, we're looking at the hydraulic capacity or something else per day. So we've got both population on the left, um, as well as the key hourly flows rate. That's a fair question. Now, we take you to treatment plant. If you go into preliminary treatment, preliminary treatment is basically where we pull the garbage out of the wastewater. What you're seeing, the yellow, this is the screening structure and, um, screen room, we've got screens that really serve their full design line typically, but somewhere around 20 years down. On the right, I'm showing you the control panel for removal system, which has basically been sitting out there, uh, in a pretty rough environment. Um, this is critical infrastructure that is currently keeping the garbage out of the wastewater. Renting, pumping, blocking, ensuring that the water moving, and wasting it here. If we assume that we can get another 20 years out of this kind of equipment, obviously, we'd be playing a lot of reactive, most correct, and that's what this really plan is all about. So here's another, um, piece of, of the scope that we're looking at, and this is hydraulic casting, as I mentioned before, we are gonna be running into a hydraulic limitation, um, that's gonna be coming up sometime in about five years or so. There are currently two primary reactors, and what we are proposing as part of this plan is actually technology, third, sometime within the design period. Now, credit to Tim and his team, they've been doing great with the two that they have, we have an excellent operations staff. We also wanna make sure they have the tools that, that if storms maybe get more intense, that we are not packing our bases, and that's, that's a key part of it. As we work further down the, uh, plan, some of these that really need some, um, addressing are on the sludge handling side, so what we mean, also about biosalts, it's a, it's a term. When, uh, when basically you separate the biosalts from the clean to that moment, uh, you still have to basically keep the water out. And so in this case, we're looking at a ZAP system, resolved air quotation, thickening, as well as air and metal thickener. Cause all we're trying to do is we're trying to press out waters pulling onto biosalts, but not just. As you can see just from the pieces of pictures, this is not regular, they didn't rely on this for a long time. Again, credit to the operations staff, but hoping that we can get another 20 years of these pieces quickly, isn't realistic.
Cause the, the original, the original plan went into 1977, so, really, if you think of that, it's coming out of, on the score, it still is coming out, 50 years old, so. I'm sure anybody's right around the 1977, I am, or, you know, it's 20, 24, 7, 300, 60, about 20 years. Done an excellent job, keeping everything going, everything you're showing here is already here.
Largely.
But it was solid still.
Yeah, so, basically, when, when we're pulling, uh, similar for thickening, the salads, we're ready for, for the salad, so ultimately, get thicker, thicker, go to the camera detector. And we're gonna basically recover some energy from that, and then ultimately stabilize those outlets so that you store them before also we get, uh, farm, you know. So I'll rather, uh, ignore, and things like that, gonna get a lot of fermentation. Okay.
And then, there actually one of the fields is right next to the house, so. So I, I see it every day, when, when they apply, usually that's. When drops a one.
Thank you. Last thing, this is by no means a minor detail, uh, the electrical equipment, uh, is probably, I would say, one of the top priorities as part of this sewage line effort. Conduit that is taped on water, just the kind of situation at a condition standpoint, don't wanna be really, like, that. So this is, um, we look at controls like the sludge handling right, we're looking at, uh, electrical equipment just to get general process rooms, the level of testing level. Not for a, for a community that is this prepared, forthcoming, it's not a long-term solution. And so, Tim and the team, we take the time to make sure we are preparing for the next 20 years, so this is the mindset for. So, uh, I've got pie charts, and I've got a pie chart because again, this is a discussion. I'm not coming saying this is the only way to do it, uh, we're engineers, we are problem solvers, and we can come to this too, as far as. But when, I got done with looking through the entire plan, um, and looking at what total project cost should be if we did everything at once, which I'm not saying we can do. If we were though, we'd be looking at somewhere around $23,000 of capital. Uh, what you see though, on the left, where I've got that pie chart, is basically the left half or so, is what I think are really the primaries that need to be addressed soon. A lot of that, so, showing you a couple examples, unlikable is a big chunk, uh, as well as the ultraviolet disinfection system, which I didn't show you the picture of. The costs there associated with that are going to be good investments, so that we don't end up, we can chase our tail or react. Critical pieces that are sort of powered on anymore. Biosalts, another, um, major, uh, piece of this that should be addressed later, uh, should do the picture of that stream, take care of my treatment. Uh, and then on the, uh, secondary side, basically some more floors, make sure we get air in the specific waste. And then there's other pieces over here that could be waiting for maybe not the first project to come on this facility, but now I'll say, the primary chunk, this, big chunk of this is essentially, uh, to build additional primary emitter fire, and as I showed before, we are knocking on the door on the capacity. But I'm not here to like to say, have to do it all right away, that's, that's a significant capital cost, um, so there, from a consideration standpoint, basing is something that can work with, and I've already worked with Tim just a few times. Financing, though, part of the reason I wanted to come before you guys is to talk about, um, and at least start the discussion on financing. So the clean water program has low interest loans, like 55% of market rate, as of right now, this does fluctuate, but as of right now, it's a little less than 2.5%. That's very competitive. And so looking at how much of whichever project we want to finance versus using cash reserves, that's gonna be a strategic model determination, and I can probably use the numbers. But ultimately, that's, that's the kind of decision that we wanna make sure that, and the city has all of the, you got consensus.
Leo, a couple of questions.
Please.
Do you think there'd be a cost benefit by doing certain projects right, you know, staging, one, one project manager, one design, build specialist, versus doing this easily?
I think on the, um, the bidding side of it, I think that is, I think on the, or the city staff, I know historically, city has done smaller, uh, this, this, this growth.
And then, did you. If you, if you wait around over time, if you do these kind of projects over the course of 10, 15, 20 years, plus the price of the cost you're speaking to.
From a strictly cost standpoint, I think. Yeah, this can probably, it has. You gotta, right, be, we'll see what's in a certain part, you know, can you, you gotta digest your cover, I don't remember my second. So in those, there might be certain pieces that are, that logically can stand alone, can almost get plugged into our normal budget process, if it's. So, so I don't know, so at least we can get, um, we can get a picture, but yeah, to your point, I think. Uh, sometimes smaller projects are easier for staff, or still they're doing their jobs, but they have still money, and, um, harder to manage larger projects, but certainly give me, uh.
Yeah, it's kinda like pull a Band-Aid off, kind of red waders, for, for a little over five years, um, a couple other quick things.
5,000.
More people don't necessarily mean we need 5,000 more racks, because of, back at the residential foot, two trucks, so, some houses, you know, above 400 people, so they're not necessarily, just easier to stand. People doesn't necessarily, just a wall of racks, right?
Yeah, I guess, as far as getting into that piece. The role which I have, for instance, as far as, I really focus is on people, cause then we're looking at half the, so there's a lot of center. Yeah, I guess, somebody.
No, I don't know, I don't think it makes sense. Is there any part of your plan that has considered or you're asking to consider, whether, would you be supposed to expand or? Given, given the area you're on, the surface, and proponent, but you're on city, is there any consideration you've given to increasing capacity overall?
Uh, I think you're saying, I guess, I'll answer the first question shortly, this was extending the area that's in search. This case, we're operating based on the SewerPAC service area, that would be a process, you know, numbers, but it's. Um, on the question of, is considered expanding the capacity? Like capacity on water, take through the house, waste and treat. Uh, yes, and the, the launch curve is based on the projected number of people, and what it was adopting is a waste area. Those people based on the away numbers and SewerPAC numbers, uh, the only capacity limitation that we saw was that. The other thing I will say though is, you do have some, what I call untapped potential, with this plant, not everything is put it up against 100% of the tank that you have for refrigeration. I don't clarify, there's a very happy. There's, you look, and you're out, and you're out, step by step, there's obviously some bottom lines, but you have, absolutely, go through how many things are happening.
When you look at this financing option.
Yep.
Is that set at a certain timeframe?
Uh, this is based on some here, um, one can extend it, you know, 20 years, generally speaking, it's difficult to not, I wouldn't expect it in this case.
Yeah, so maybe we'll, if the one set on is approved, and it's a fix, right, for the 20 years, it doesn't affect.
There, there is, they have 30-year action, but that's actually higher. Are we able to look at options for? Uh, increasing possibly rec or trying to pass this 23% here for capacity increases on to construction, people who visit, in person, capacity, pay for that particular piece of. I guess what I'll say to that is, we do a very simplified, like, I think. We do a very simplified at the facility plan level, which is basically saying, okay, on average, if we just push things forward in all, prosper, or equal, here's what it would look like. We're not doing like formal rate study or con tour. That might be a question for us to talk about. Um, those are great questions, and they kinda lead into, um, let everyone's work this on too. Yes, nice question, about, you know, should we do it all at once, we're up and ready, um, and I guess this is where I would say, I've got two scenarios in front of you, um, both of which are reasonable. Same scenario, one is the, well, I think we're up and ready, um, here's what these products, this project would take. I, in scenario one, I also assumed, I won't say worst case or best case, I assumed essentially fully financing and not paying any cash reserves. And so you can think of that as worst case or best case, depending on perspective, um, but even if we did that, it basically maintains what you had in cash reserves. If you're looking at a rating, this is a bigger question, 23%, which ends up translating to on a average, or the average, I figure on that much. Now, in scenario, see, I start to kind of show a little bit of, alright, here's another way you could go, right, and then there's quite a number of ways you could, as an example. If we essentially took that, that pie chart I showed in the last slide, we took, once I taught, a really high priority, and then I'm looking at about, well, less than $15 million, total budget costs. Um, so a lot of the little bets, some of them, some things that really can't wait. If you partially finance that and use cash reserves, that's basically the difference, in this case, I'm talking about, I just will. Cash reserves to be somewhere, some percent, scenario, that rate increase, that would be about 5%, that's two point one.
So just stating the obvious, right, scenario two is, is using pieces, provided, the nature of the pieces, stuff that has capacity and, or sufficient, that's, that's light, I think, it'd be interesting to see, maybe not, you have different pieces here, but I'm assuming that's a little, right, there's different assets. These pieces can still, they got light, but I'm gonna put these in here.
Yes, I, I guess what I'd say, this is phase one of, of like a multi thing, I don't think there's a question on my mind. There's not a question on the 23 million, so I notice, that those will need to address within, based on, here's. What I'm showing is scenario two is, well, this, here's the, what could be the first project, several things. Your side of the work.
Yeah, from a financing standpoint, maybe, we have lots of reserves, but firing at 2.4, even those reserves are making more interest. I think for it all now, we're interested in self-employment, and there's certain costs involved, but, you know, that, you're, you're looking to play this. It feels like financing will end right now, responsible. I agree, I just ran the numbers.
Yeah.
This is, this is just a, this is just a go-bye, I mean, can't pay up, so, so, if there's free crops on. Or reserve, we can't use it.
What I think as this goes forward, as we have more discussions, and, Steve, we also hope that we, and we have experience to a blast, that we can, based on. Having come very close to my expected estimates, no offense to, because it's happened in everything, so I think those are the things, I appreciate you bringing up these things.
Okay.
It also puts more of the onus on current city residents and sewer group folks to pay a land share for it right away, and that future population, and, I guess, in that term, so. Let's keep it on the table.
I think, uh, once I've looked, uh, it's just showing the schedule that we are proposing. And so what we would like to do, if, you know, this means you're consensus, probably, it's actually that, can, probably, correct? Formal requirement, no facility planning, basically have a current notice, and what, um, take what concerns them, I have for, celebrate the idea, whatever they like to. Uh, and then we would like to submit that facility plan to the DNR, take a certain amount of time, a few months, and the next step would be, is to start the plan. The project to come out there with, obviously, it's a less silent, update or hustle on the project that's actually decision-making, but, at least wanted to spell my name. Uh, but as Jim was mentioning earlier, if they took all the way up here, we'd be talking about, kind of, that first project, maybe it's a whole project, that's a decision. Um, sometime, eight, nine, expect, just to be grateful.
Um, is there any downside of having this public hearing in October, is a lot of things in queue, so our question, I know we have a current notice timeframe, but just trying to make sure council has as much information prior to that, so, and that we're all well-prepared for.
Uh, the short answer is no, there's no downside, you know, I think I will say this, it's, it's an option, I'd look at Tim to tell me what he'd like to do, um. Facility plan, uh, he submitted DNR prior to the public hearing, but, uh, my perspective is, I like to hold, say what I have to say. Are you all seven minutes separate? Without really my questions.
No, that, that all sounds good, I just wanna make sure. Mark and I know that we have in queue, we have the next quarter, I think, so, I don't wanna just ram through it, but the hearing, and we don't have some more council's questions answered.
We're looking 20 years ahead.
If this, yeah, okay, thank you.
That's all, that's all, actually, I'll leave it on the, it's kind of a slide.
Council, any questions? Uh, thank you for letting me into order, if you haven't done that, I'd recommend, so, to make the scene a lot more.
Yes.
Powerful, much thank you, I'm sorry.
I'd like to comment, or a question for Steve, so, as we're looking at these two different options, um, I assume now we have enough time to be, to do an analysis of both of these options. So we'll look at the information.
Well, and part of that analysis, though, shouldn't include this slide, which is phase two, right?
Correct.
So, we've got this clearly in 14.7, but the reality is, there's still another seven out there, that we have to consider, it's a negative point. So what does that look like, also financing, and, like, your costs, so I'd love to see a calculation that also includes what that add costs when we're in this.
And that's right, no time, I didn't clarify that, thank you.
Well, thank you very much, gentlemen, and Tim, thank you especially for your team. We'll get back to you, appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn committee, all, who.
Second.
All in favor, right? We will start the, uh, and common council meeting, uh, at 7:30, so we'll start in just a moment, you know, and we're ready. I'd like to call a ordered City of Oklahoma common council meeting, first of all, Jim Smith, because this is a proper meeting, uh, education. If you would all please rise, our pleasure, ladies and gentlemen, Jim Smith.
I'm the ladies, the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic, for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice.
Thank you.
Alvin, um, here. Alvin, Alvin Wolf.
Here.
Alvin Denver.
Here.
Alvin Rosen.
Here.
Alvin, Alvin Wolf, here. Alvin Alice.
Here.
Alvin Stigler.
Here.
Alvin Wolf.
Here.
Thank you, I'd like to, Tim, uh, approve of four minutes, which are 11:15.
Someone, Rosa, the second.
All in favor, right? And comments and suggestions from citizens, if you'd like to make a comment or suggestion, or a blue card, we'd like to have you fill out. Uh, I'll then read your name, if you'd please come to the podium, you have about two minutes, you can, let's, share with us, any, any topic, uh, that you'd like to share with the council. Does not have to be, and tonight's agenda, can, um, anything that you feel that they need to hear. So please come up, state your names, your.
You're not there.
Okay. No, I'm on there and I'm an active participant on there. I have never seen, oh, well, I take that back. I've seen one post and someone asked for our feedback and I did provide it at that point, but that was it.
I think, anyway, reach out to us.
Sure. I can do that.
They're happy to work.
Yes, thank you for your time.
Next up is George. When.
This week upon, thank you. It's not American, it's actually German, the seventeen hundreds. Finally, they developed. I'm here because I actually live on the corner of Ludalia and Lake Walk. My first concern is when Lake Walk was lined, they should go. We have kids everywhere on bicycles. I retired for quite a while. I watched the kids come by in their bicycles. They ride in the streets. And part of the reason is, you know, sidewalk in certain areas like Green Valley, wherever, not long ago. But there's not paying streets. Kids are used to riding on asphalt streets. So it gets like a circus out there before school and the school itself. If you want to do something, it's a bit dangerous. What people come flying down the street because it run over Broadway. There's a number of issues that I look at when they come down the street and I'll be like, excuse me. The whole world has changed as far as what kids do. When people come in their car, get out of my corner, and I'm Ludalia, willing to hide from Lake Walk. I would say fifty percent of them do not stop from the stop sign. The other, I don't walk my dog around there all the time. People don't stop because it's a ball ride. They just blast through there. They drive through maybe ten miles an hour around the corner. They can't even see a kid in a bicycle out in the street. The other thing, a number of things, was where a lot of people tend to windows in their car so, so great that you can't even see anybody in it. How can they see out if a kid comes flying down the street in a bicycle? Especially if you don't stop at the stop sign. The other issue, one of many issues, is when you're looking at the street and the storm sewer drains, all, not all, but most of them went directly into Crystal Lake. They just dump it in there. People, so many people get fertilizer, fertilizers, some. Years ago, nobody wants to hear this, I'm sure. Years ago, there was a problem, and the problem was that Crystal Lake was getting too hot, getting up close to people's doorways. So they went through it and they actually dug out another water, run down to head towards Creek, which probably wouldn't be a problem except there was people there from the city into the township. And the big deal is you have so much pollution going into Crystal Lake. They were gonna pump, they started pumping water out of Crystal Lake into Rose Town Creek. I made a phone call to DNR, two hours in our bitter shut that down. Well, we don't have two naturally reproducing, uh, toll streets in the state. Southeastern Wisconsin becoming wall repair, seeing no supply, various companies, nobody has a pristine street. There's one more I listed. This is a treasure we have here on what, if you let people know, we have a stream that has trout that reproduce. Don't fish in there. It's beautiful. It's fantastic. The state, it never was that way up above the eighties. The state came in and DNR, they did that. Shore or the corners, but on red levels, soil, roots, nature, stuff growing, so that stream would be healthy.
That was, I mean, I need you to wrap up.
Okay.
Yeah, a lot of different aspects and topics.
Okay. When they looked at it, I see one from township, and I was down there watching this operation. And the comment from, from both sides was, I think we'll let the lawyer settle this. We got a problem here. We have not done anything about it. They're trying to find out that road, some kids could get there. We have the real treasure of the stream, and we want to mess with it and buy it. Regent or do whatever with it. It's outrageous. Don't go anywhere. Neither the first plus destroy it. The state don't vote for it. No right to involve us before it's not. And the other thing, how can anybody do it with their conscience? I think it's a good idea to have people driving down that street, which we already see a lot more. With our kids out there, riding down the street in their bikes. It's just outrageous. Some of the people will get hurt terribly or killed. That's what we're, and I get up every day. I'm retired. I can book off their seats going up. I'm surprised some kid hasn't already been running. They need, they need to have a policeman down there who checks the stop signs. You can't have half the people high going ten miles an hour around the sign because it's a ball ride. They're gonna fuck to the left, or to the right, just the left by a sign, fly around. It's on the same, it's irregular, and there's no reason why you should be doing this. It's a waste of money. This is gonna cost, if you want to waste the money, and not waste it, use it. Figure out what the dude was with a storm on. Rather than having it running Crystal Lake, which is no way, it's now it's a catch. It's almost a subject.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other questions or comments from citizens? Anything else you'd like to share? Here to none, we'll move on to our next agenda item that like to entertain a motion for the consent of item. The agenda item six, eight, six. Someone. All in favor?
Aye.
Close. And to our next group of items, our community report, Star of Public Services. Consider act on resolution twenty-five dash R three-three-zero-one, engineering design services for the two thousand twenty-six street and utility improvements. Mr. Resonant.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, before we move to minutes for the engineering services for twenty-two-six, and a little bit of our twenty-two-seven street design program. We annually advertise this to the community. We reached out to some thirty-six different engineers and got responses back from five of them. It's a considerable perk. We'll instructions designed most likely within two years and be able to utilize the services for the firm to help us. Not only prepare the construction plans, but also the help and assist the city with the plan. The loan trace loan for water, as well. Inside, you'll see some of the details. The construction firms all submitted proposals they reviewed by staff, and we accumulated the net point totals inside of this, so you can see the rankings inside of that. Collins Engineering was a very high engineering firm in the technical review. Uh, that's eighty percent of their scoring. Costs were evaluated as well. Uh, overall, Collins is the number one engineering firm statistically, with Cedar Creek just behind it. See some of the differences in costs. Collins was at two hundred and fifty-seven, two hundred and fifty-eight thousand roughly. Cedar Creek was two hundred and nineteen thousand. So we, as staff, have recommended Collins as they had scored the highest with technical and costs combined. Uh, they have a strong design team. They also are designer for the Crystal Bridge. And the street replacement for that, uh, they have a considerable amount of experience and have a very strong team. Uh, for that, I do recommend Collins Engineering.
Do we have any comments or questions from council? For those in the audience, this was discussed in committee just before the council, several of these items. Also, just as a side note, if there's anyone with regard to Lake Walk that wants to talk after the meeting, I would be happy to stay later and talk with you if you have questions. Um, any comments or questions on this item, this agenda item? All in my way.
Um, I think it's important that, just to acknowledge that we discussed in committee about this. Well, uh, the recommended Collins is not the loaded competence that you have in them to do a job that's kind of twice, uh, over seventeen years. So while it's, uh, they were the highest scoring based on the different criteria, a little bit more expensive, but I'm gonna vote tops to vote for that. It's not a mutual problem.
Black project. Would you be able to share for everybody that what goes into scoring for each of these buckets?
Yeah, how? Yeah, I mean, the technical review is, uh, ruled against and evaluated against their proposal. Uh, it's basically a big component is trying to decide, do they have the strength, uh, to do the work? What type of team can they put together? What qualifications? What past experiences have they done? Have they worked with the city of Lake County projects? That all gets ranked in the review to kind of evaluate each, each firm analytically. And then each of the four of us combine the scores to hold together an average.
Is it a group that does that or?
Uh, we have a team of four. Uh, it's myself, my assistant, uh, Lucas Kane, our utility engineer, engineer, and Pat from the utilities also. All of which are part of our design.
Any other questions or comments? Like to entertain a motion, please. So he's made the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further questions or comments? Call roll, please.
Alden Schalberg.
Aye.
Alden McCann.
Aye.
Alden.
Geller.
Aye.
Alden.
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 I'm ready to sit back and consider act on resolution twenty-five dash R two-three-zero-two. Street three. He's been great. Yeah, once again, thank you. This is a follow-up to our original point B process for the Lappo Street Bridge replacement. This refers to the grant that the, the state and federal government have awarded the city back in twenty-two. So time has passed, a couple of years of design, new estimates, inflation, have expanded the full amount of the original grant. I amended that and submitted another amendment to the grant so that they could review and honor the project itself. So roughly speaking, the numbers are listed in your packet. The original grant was just under one point eight dollars. Uh, the new estimate came in higher, closer to one point seven million. Submitted that back to the state and federal government for review. Uh, they did review that this, this summer and got back to the city. As they will continue to honor their original grant at a hundred percent. Uh, the additional funds would be a cost share of eighty percent to cities, twenty percent. Uh, again, these are estimates. We will not have final bids until December, late December, at which we will fully explain some of the details of how that grant applies to the funds available and to the, the project itself. You'll also see in here that the funds are being produced to come from capital reserves, which we discussed in committee. It's a conform to capital project funds that are not fully utilized in that process. Questions or comments from council? Like to entertain a motion, please?
Second.
Any further questions or comments? Call roll, please.
Alden Schalberg.
Aye.
Alden McCann.
Aye.
Alden.
Aye.
Alden.
Aye.
Alden.
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 Austin.
Aye. Next item is from our community. Our utilities, utility community, our recommendation, consider act on ordinance twenty-five one-one-zero-six, amendment to section thirteen point four-nine-two and eleven point oh-seven-seven of the municipal code regarding sewer connections. It's pre-er.
Not pre-er. That was our, that was our bold, our previous, uh, commentary chair, so we'll, sorry about that. Mr. Rea. Yeah, the, uh, language in our call tonight deals specifically with an existing requirement going in the ordinance that deals with the requirement for parcels to connect to our sanitary sewer. Um, specific language, I guess, kind of sunrise, uh, states that a property which, a property which is adjacent to or in a block to which a public sewer extends must connect to the public sewer in twelve months of that sewer being operational. So, um, we do have, uh, we had fielded inquiries from parcels within the community, uh, both myself and N R K. That, um, have concerned with the ordinance as written. Our response, uh, wasn't necessary and we followed of the ordinance we had in place. Our response was quite permanent. We don't have a pathway to providing alternate. So, um, an example of a situation like this would be someone that, uh, may have an existing subject system that is failing. And they may have sewer that is adjacent or approximate to that, but it's not necessarily right in front of their home. It could be across the road, um, to sanitary sewer that might be assumed to be available with a significant diameter and depth. So the cost to a homeowner in the city limits could be pretty great if we were to force them to connect to our sanitary sewer. There, or as we've kind of previously determined, adjacent to. So the proposed language would give us flexibility to open up a dialogue on a case-by-case basis with these parcels, so that we could, uh, maybe come about, come with a more logical solution, uh, that would still serve, uh, for the safety reasons that person so that they can properly treat the base structure. So that's the end of the update to chapter eleven oh-seven, would simply clarify that we do allow within, uh, measurement and some constraint, uh, having holding tanks and subject tanks in.
Thank you, Tim. I really appreciate your statements for the council. Thanks for updating. I think gives the residents of the city some flexibility when there's hardship placed in the sewer hookup. So, great job. Any questions or comments from council? Like to entertain a motion?
Uh, proceed, son.
Second.
Do you want to allow, uh, weigh the second reading? Or keep that in? Oh, yeah, sorry. Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll have a time to weigh the second reading.
Do I have a second? Aye. Any further questions or comments? Call roll, please.
Alden Schalberg.
Aye.
Alden McCann.
Aye.
Alden.
Aye.
Alden.
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 Aye.
All right. Thank you, Tim. I'm sorry I called you the wrong, wrong person. Sorry. Um, on a new business, consider act on resolution twenty-five dash R three-two-nine-nine, approving an amendment to the project plan and boundaries of tax incremental district. So, Mr. Drucker.
Good evening. This is related to TIP district number seven. If you recall, we were here in June. This is to amend both boundary and the project plan for TIP seven, or the fields, uh, as well as the whole Highland area. Consistent with our comprehensive plan, some things, some of our areas planned is and as well as for policymakers standpoint, we continue to ensure reinvestment into this area of the city, given the buys. So since June, we've had a public hearing at the commission in July second, today three, four, two of my colleagues. I'm a part of it. So most of this has moved through the process. I will let Greg, uh, Greg Johnson can also give us to talk about project plan components, the statute regarding this product project. As well, we do have some of the investors here as well, in case you have specific questions about the projects. This forward. Tension is, if you, obviously, we're looking for you to approve that resolution, once Greg shares with you the specific components related to those certain findings that are required for you to see in that project plan. And currently, we are working with, uh, the development groups to outline their TIP development agreement related to this as well. I hope to bring that to you.
Mr. Johnson, thank you for joining us. We're seeing you online.
Yes. Good evening. Just a quick recap of how a tax no finances report, if you're generally familiar with this, just for a quick recap. So when a TIP district is created, there's existing taxable value of all the property within a TIP district, that's called the base value. And all the taxing jurisdictions, city, county, school, district, and technical college, all collect their share of tax on that existing value. And that was in place prior to the TIP being created or amended. So there's no change in the amount of property taxes that each jurisdiction collects. Uh, but the benefit of a TIP district financially is when the value increases above the ongo that was there for the time it was created or amended. So that increase in value to new construction, redevelopment, appreciation, that's called the incremental value. And the city retains all the tax revenue from that increased value capable for all expenses. So what a TIP district is, a partnership, city, all the other taxing jurisdictions, help promote development, redevelopment, and most other taxing jurisdictions are agreeing to forebode their share of tax revenue on that new value created to help spur development. So in terms of the purpose of the, uh, TIP district seven amendment, it's really two-fold. First is to add some additional territory to the district. It's about sixteen acres. A development that's anticipated on that part of the townhouse development. Uh, that incremental value is going to be helpful to capture increased tax revenue, help pay for ongoing expenses within the district. And then the second purpose is to increase the eligible project cost within the district by approximately twenty-four million, one hundred and six thousand dollars. So that's the two purposes of the amendment. When this district was created, it was established as a white in TIP district under statute. Any time you amend the TIP district, you're still required to certify in the project plan. District meets the criteria of the white district in this case. Uh, so you'll see the chart, kind of shows the official acreage within the district when it was created. Acreage from the first amendment, this proposed amendment. Able to certify that the sixty-five percent of the area within the district either at the time of creation, when the district is amended, amended criteria, the area that is affected by the city back in twenty-two, so the district will still be compliant with that. We have a map of the proposed district boundary, kind of up at the top of the northwest area, that hatch area. Southwest corner of that hatch area, those are the two areas within the district that we are adding to this proposed amendment. So that accomplishes the territory portion. In terms of just kind of talking about the future plans within the district holistically, uh, the existing territory and areas added through this amendment. Uh, so the existing district has, from our two developers that are active within the district, the first is Newton Developments. Uh, they're projecting about fifty point six million of additional value being constructed in the district from twenty-twenty-five to twenty-one. Uh, you see a breakdown of that estimated value. We have a commercial value, the purpose of the chalet, which is estimating that value of ten million dollars. Some office development, the aforementioned townhouse development, is estimated to generate about thirty-five million additional value. Wagonards, the other active development within, development within the district. Um, in terms of this amendment, there's the Elevate project, which is the add additional thirty-six million additional value constructed between twenty-twenty-six and twenty-twenty-seven. Uh, there's other areas under their control that's eligible for continued, uh, development. We're not factored into that in our financial analysis. At this point, I'm just trying to be conservative. So when, uh, the district was created and when it was amended the first time, there are eligible project costs identified in the project plan, largely falls into a couple of categories. Uh, first is infrastructure improvements, the second is development incentives that are provided to the two respective developers. Uh, when a TIP district is created or amended, required to identify the project costs you manage to take within the district. The project plan itself does not permit the city to take these projects. That typically is memorialized when the city approves development agreements, or when the city expects financing that's necessary to pay for projects within the project. So the majority of the projects identified in the official plan, the first amendment, have been accomplished with the exception of the allowance or the future partway, which is subject to kind of future parallel development of the budget, the balance of the rest of these projects. So the project costs that propose to be added through this amendment really kind of fall into a couple of categories. Uh, was already been identified as a cost for the district. Uh, so there's some public infrastructure improvements, which are anticipated, have to be financed with debt, which will be guaranteed by increment generated by the developers. Uh, and then there's development incentives related to social and the Elevate project specifically. And then we estimate interest costs for, uh, future financing, that infrastructure and development incentives. So this district in this amendment, these costs, you would continue to make existing partnership that already exists with Vanguard and Newman, and also the existing financial relationship that's already based with both developers. So there's been debt issued by the city for public infrastructure improvements. District was created, both developers have guarantees in place to generate tax increment revenue annually to cover the debt service payments for their respective developments. If their projects do not generate enough tax supplement, they're required to make a shortfall payment to the city. So that is how the city is protected, uh, from having to, you know, make those debt service payments from resources. And then development incentives are paid out to both developers under the current agreements. Uh, but those only get paid after the debt service payments are made. So there's kind of what we typically call waterfall, which is paid and served in order to kind of help mitigate risk and provide protections to the city. Uh, so this proposed amendment continues that kind of ongoing financial structure. Uh, some of the public infrastructure improvements are contemplating finance for future debt issuance by the city, which will be guaranteed by developers. Then development incentives, whether it's financed with debt or on a pay-as-you-go basis, meaning it's paid as the increment is generated annually by a developer, again, is only subject to them generating sufficient increment to pay those incentives in full. Again, anything financed with debt is guaranteed, guaranteed by the developers. Pay-as-you-go incentives are paid out annually over the life of the district up to cap. If the developer does not generate enough increment to pay up to that cap in the development agreement, the city has no responsibility to make up that shortfall. So that's really kind of, the current financial structure is really already in place within, uh, the existing TIP district. It's not going to change, uh, as a result of this amendment. Uh, but this amendment really kind of helps further the objectives of kind of developing the area and that same financial structure. We included, just for reference, some maps of general location of some of the permits, uh, some road extensions, traffic improvements, uh, leading into the district, sanitary sewer permits, uh, as well as storm sewer to waterway. And then finally, just some ongoing pedestrian trail and sidewalk. I know you're, the lawyer with some of the main projects being proposed with this amendment, uh, just kind of again, some of that free capture, uh, proposed developments, the Elevate project, Vanguard, uh, and then the social, which is being done in partnership with Newman. In terms of the financial analysis, this is one of the required findings and content of the project plan. So the development assumptions are, show the projected increase in value both for areas already within the district, and as well as areas being added. areas already within the district, as well as areas being added in the proposed territory amendment. This amendment, project cost, all project costs in the plan are deemed eligible. As I said earlier, the city makes determinations, when it finances those infrastructure improvement projects, and other incentives for the development agreement, possibly evaluating standard health performing. The cash flow projection currently projects that the district would be in position to close, pay off all its obligations by 2044. When the district was originally created, the projected closure was in 2041. But, you know, one of the key components of this amendment is the redevelopment of the chalet, kind of ongoing expansion and development within the district, those contemplated when the district was created. One other item that's impacting the financial performance of the district presently in this state to a common walk is generally seeing TIP tax rates decline over the past several years. For Conlon specifically, when this TIP district was created, the tax rate was $16.47 per thousand for the district. Presently, for this fiscal year, 2025, is at $12.07 per thousand. Generally, why that decline has occurred is that the valuation increases have been very healthy for the past several years, but several of the tax jurisdictions, the city and the county, are specifically, are subject to levy limits. So the levy hasn't been doing as much, as much as the value has been. Tax rates, the levy divided by the value per thousand of value, that's kind of what's driving that type of curve. So not unique to Conlon Walk, but certainly changes the financial performance of the This is kind of the detailed breakdown of all the development assumptions, how the district needs to be estimated increases in taxable value. So annually, the Department of Revenue certifies incremental value for all TIP districts. They just give a total for the entire district. The city staff internally historically breaks down all that incremental value based on each developer, and then Land Guard to determine whether or not the increments been sufficient to cover their obligations. So these are projections based on input of the developers themselves, but these are estimates in terms of the future buildup within the district. Based on that actual and future projected value, it just projects the tax incremental maximum 27-year lifespan. So that's the maximum life of a related TIP. So the cash flow projection, this is just all the detail that explains the financial structure I described previously. So the tax increment's the primary revenue stream that comes into the district. You'll see several debt issues that have occurred over the past several years. You'll note several of them identified with a specific developer that's required to guarantee that debt service. Some of the debt services attributable to the district at large, which the city is ultimately responsible for being paid by this TIP district. So again, the developers, any of their debt service is guaranteed under the development agreement. Any future debt issued, subject to the amendment, subject to that same guarantee. And so we just show also the pay-as-you-go development incentives that are in place presently in Land Guard, this proposal project. So again, it kind of shows the projection of 2044. So this gets evaluated minimally annually, oftentimes at regular intervals as new developments come forward, just to kind of see how the district is. So Director Duffy mentioned, kind of bridging the tail end of the statutory required process to amend the TIP district. It was the initial convening of the joint review board, which is just organizational. By commission help, a statutory required public hearing. They're required to approve the amendment, which we did. It's before you for official action this evening. Your approval is required for the process to proceed. And then, as was mentioned, the final joint review board, which will be presented to the Trump Report this evening tomorrow. They have a final statement in terms of what. So that's kind of the overview of the proposed amendment, kind of the existing financial structure that's in place, anticipated to continue.
Questions from council for Mr. Johnson, Mr. Duffy? Thank you, Greg.
Yeah, go ahead. In regards to social, I know you guys today, it's a financial viable project. Do you share like what other like organizations or companies or projects you use in that comparison for you?
So in terms of finding direct comparables to the social, I mean, that's a bit challenging due to the nature of the project. It's a redevelopment of a chalet, and you know, so finding that they're comparable is a little difficult. Typically, what we do when we do the partner review is we look at the developers' proposed sources and uses, how they're proposing to fund the project, what they're making in terms of debt, equity contributions, how the TIP participation is paid structured, all their proposed uses in terms of the proposed construction costs, and then kind of look at their rate of return going forward kind of with and without financial assistance from the TIP district. And really, it's about kind of trying to see that the rate of return that they're getting from that investment capital for the project to proceed is fair and reasonable with TIP assistance. You know, I think generally developers are willing to receive the project, you know, to be, you know, financially viable, they can give that appropriate return. But we want to evaluate from a TIP perspective is that the developers not being overly enriched by that TIP participation, and that that partnership is fair at particular levels. And just as important is kind of what I mentioned, which are guarantees that are in place to kind of check that the developers are responsible for coming, you know, generally not being able to cover their investment investments. So I mean, in terms of the rate of return, we felt, given some of the challenges with the site, particularly with redevelopment and repurposing of it, you know, that requires a certain level of investment. And I know, I'm not here to speak on behalf of the developers at all, but I know that, you know, they've represented, that they've worked with multiple, and tried by multiple partners to try to get this off the ground. They're creating this challenge, just given the site. So we felt that what they were asking for, you know, they're looking for, you know, strong public participation here. Say that they're not, but I think in terms of what the amendment and what's trying to be accomplished here is really build out and redevelop a plan that was as envisioned, which really wasn't thought of or anticipated when the district was created. So it's kind of the next iteration and opportunity to see that area redeveloped as the city is.
So Justin, you, the analysis did not have, I mean, the analysis not include what we think of future revenues? It's all about relating to investors they have now, brought on board, in relation to how much money?
Yes, and it's, I mean, it's ultimately looking at, you know, somewhat in terms of, you know, their kind of performance of, of the development. But the way this partnership is structured is, you know, they need it to be successful. Because if it isn't, there's still a lot of work. And that's, you know, the importance of the agreement that's, that's already in place with the developers now, extends that if they don't generate sufficient increment, for whatever reason, the project, you know, isn't as successful or runs into some difficulties, they're still financially obligated to make this difficult. So I mean, you know, there's, there's risk on both sides as a partnership, but we're trying to kind of put those provisions in place that extend those provisions that are in place and opportunity.
And for the public, I'd like to recognize that the council's been going through this for many, many months. They've seen all these numbers, and the numbers have changed, and we've tried to improve the cost sharing component of it. So they, it isn't something that just came off the table. It's the first time, all these graphs and these different spreadsheets that we've seen on the screen. Any other questions or comments from council, or from Shell Pepper?
As it relates to the social, I mean, what would you say the risk is? Is it, is it Newman become, go bankrupt? Is that essentially the risk?
So the Newman's a pretty, yeah, for the community, basically have personal guarantees on this, on the building. So if they're not able to meet their applications, the city taxpayer is not going to be paying for it, the developers. So that's, that's really, really important in this process. But that is the risk, absolutely. Do you have any more comments?
I was just saying, no, I mean, I don't know how long it's been around, but it's a pretty well-known company in southeast Wisconsin, probably one of the more successful companies. So sure, you can't completely erase the risk, but considering the risk that we're dealing with, I think overall, it's, it's reasonable.
If you look at the area, as you go west, that's all they're covered. So it's in their best interest. The same thing goes for Land Guard. It's in their best interest because it's going to enter some old area. And also for the community to understand, when they did this assessment, Greg, please correct me if I'm wrong, we looked at developments to build that caution to pay the debt with growth and increment. We did, there are several parcels that were not included that are there, and when those get developed, those automatically go in. So our goal is that this TIP, as most of them have in the city, get paid off much earlier than they're projected here. So our goal in this analysis and our request availers is to be ultra-conservative, and almost not give us a worst-case scenario, but what we want to do is make sure that we don't end up with a problem. And I'm fairly confident, based on it, like to, along with Shell Pepper, there's always risk. All in all, so.
Yeah, I mean, that's a good point. Yes, as far as many goes, I have a lot of financial risk there, security, or your building. To me, the biggest risk on the social is just, it, it doesn't pan out, and you just have that to know. To me, that's the biggest risk, actually, just because it's such a unique project. But I think we have to go some faith behind what wants, we want to kind of happen there. I will say that early on, when we did the original version of this TIP, the first version of this, there was very early discussions about activating that speed over in July. That was, that is the first discussion for three or four years. In fact, we saw a variety of plans very early on of what that could look like and how that's supposed to activate. And we encouraged the developers specifically, give them to work towards something in that area. That included the additional railways, you know, Snyder, and activating the rest of the area. So it's certainly something we've talked about a lot. We have a lot of open sessions. It's significant, I think, three or four years ago, we committed a whole, really trying to pan out what could work there. And I think we finally have something that, I think, we got a good shot at. And to the mayor's point, the TIPs we've done throughout the city, throughout all the time I've had with council, that while they're successful through the city, has enabled us to do significant projects that otherwise would go directly impact the taxpayers, give debt, or may increase, just straight up increase taxes. So I think this makes a lot of sense in this area that, what, five, six years ago was a dilapidated, abandoned hotel, parking lot, now is, is reactivated, is new, is energized. It's a really cool place to live, I think.
Tom, you have another? Yeah, I, I do agree with you about the risk gain in social, I do. But I also think the price tag is a some B, I do think it passes the bloodbore test. I don't think anything important happened in space. It gets torn down, or we best hope something happened there. And I think for, for the community community, I do think the Elevate, you know, was, is shuttle-ready and ready to go. I think financial changes have happened with the valuation. And they, I think, also that value of that land requires some investment on our part to make sure a project can go with the scale that's needed, that size of property, to get any kind of gap. So they, well, but both of those are large showers. That's what it is. Do you have a chance?
Hold on, let's take over.
To Alderman Rosa's point on how we've been talking about this for the last four or five years, I think, yes, you guys are discussing things, but if we have a chance to do something special here now, and if we don't, the whole apartment could sit there as an old trust, and we may regret that being to afford something to be really special in the city.
Like, can, can, can a motion?
Rose, I assume.
Second, any further questions or comments? Following Shell Pepper.
Just, I've been talking about the risk portion of having an empty building. I guess I kind of push back and say, I don't see that necessarily as, as a risk, because we're already sitting in a vacant lot right now that's completely dilapidated, full of asbestos. If we end up putting in the investment to reactivate this building and the venture doesn't succeed, we have like a brand-new building that has new infrastructure around it, that isn't a risk to the taxpayer. Newman's making that guarantee, so I'm, I'm less concerned about that. Growing up, you know, Conlon, Olympia Resort was a job. I mean, it was so important to the community and work. First job, one of the first jobs, I should say, first job was garbage, but one of the first jobs was at the ski hills, ski instructor. You know, they had the golf course there, there was the hotel. So since I've been back on the council the last five years, I feel like I've had a mandate from the constituents to make something happen. I mean, I have heard of so many people that need to make the investments to provide recreational family fund opportunities there. And so that's why I'm supporting this, that's why I think it's the right one. So I'm looking forward to the success we've seen out there. It's been mess, we had a vacant parking lot that was full of weeds, and we had a Kmart that was going underwater. It's turned around out there tremendously, and this is going to be just the second piece of that. So looking forward to the success.
Any further comments?
Yeah, just would say, hey, Chad, the only reason I mentioned the risk without stating that is I could see the risk where this might fail, and it's just empty. I agree with you that the fact, there is no real risk in the city for that other than, you know, something eight years from now saying, well, you invested $6 million in the building, say, oh, now it's empty. Say, well, the alternative would have been, they were just going to wreck the town, and we have no opportunity to activate the building. And that's what they would do, and that's, that's in the plans right now. If this doesn't go through, just wreck the chalet down, just build, you know, more circles. And I kind of think that's what the community wants, I agree with you. Everything I've heard from people about that portion of the project specifically is very positive.
Call roll, please.
Alderman Shell Pepper?
Aye.
Alderman McCann?
Aye.
Alderman Yenber?
Aye.
Alderman Rosa?
Aye.
Alderman Ellis?
Aye.
Alderman Silver?
Aye.
Alderman North?
And moving on, thank you very much, Greg. And just a little aside, that Greg, can I give the same presentation with some more information at the community facilities meeting last week? We, they, they were, so, thank you for the service. With no staff, of course, today, there's going to be chaos from there on.
I just had one, a couple weeks ago, we had the impact for protector cops, and why any text, it was absolutely, amazingly successful, it was awesome. I think, did she dice the dance? We didn't get that, it wasn't that one. It wasn't that successful. It was wildly successful. We don't have the final numbers yet, but we, we well exceeded what we expected. And it was a great community event, a lot of people showed up, it was a blast. And apparently, my wife bought during the live auction, ride along. So she's going to be riding along with some, she tried to plug that to me, and I said, no, I'm not doing the ride along, you're doing the ride along. So thanks to everyone that's been watching for coming out, supporting the community, supporting our place, it was awesome.
Hold on, hold on.
And Rosa made me to it. It was a great event. It's a great opportunity, being able to emcee it. I was a little disappointed that she didn't bring us, not along with, so I could demonstrate the protective equipment on Alderman Rosa. It's on video somewhere. And it was very encouraging to hear that we not only, you know, achieved the number, but, you know, completely blew it out of the number, out of the water. We don't have the idol yet. I had asked, I think it was probably Captain that night, because she was too busy dancing, you know, what are we going to do with the extra funds? And they said, depending on where the numbers fall, most likely get some rifle plates for our CSOs, which I was really happy to hear that, because, I mean, we put those guys out on, on the streets, kind of made a difference in guys' nature, some level of protection. So great job to the community, and that.
Any other questions from council or council members?
Just a shout out to everybody who organized Kids Fest, I was over there today. There were people from all over, you know, Mesquite, West Bend, Magny Falls, Watertown, Lake Mills. I mean, unbelievable, the people that turned out to this event in our community. It's a lot, you know? It was unbelievable. Probably the best weather day for it, and every year, we get a little bigger with it, and keep drawing people to the great community of, of our.
An incredible bubble machine, if anybody mind saying, where the kids go in this whole bubble machine is really fun. My granddaughter went in, because I, the past 30 years, I'd never gone to this. This is the first time, and boy, I wish I would have gone for it. This bubble machine would be a great council team building.
Just admit that you wanted to go too.
No, I didn't go into it. But I wanted to. But yeah, it was, it was wonderful, and thank you very much. So just hoping, any other comments from council community? So just helping you out, comments from council, community? I just have a quick comment for you and then just notification. About a week ago, the ADRC of Waukesha County made the decision to no longer provide onsite meal sites for our seniors at the community center. They do it five days a week at the community center. In September, that will no longer be available. They also do a program called Meals on Wheels. These are two separate things. And they're going to continue Meals on Wheels, but it'll no longer be coming out of Connoisseur. It will actually be coming out of Sussex. So our people will still get the meals, but we had a long discussion, Mark and I met with the three principal leaders of ADRC, looking at different options, also looking at maybe different models and more efficiency things that we could provide some more of those special gathering moments for our seniors over, over lunch. So we're going to be working on that. I do want to share with you that if you want to go and complain at the Waukesha Budget Meeting, there's one in Brookfield on Monday, August eleventh at six P M. In Mesquito, City Hall, August fourteenth at six P M. And another one on the twenty-seventh of August at six P M. The date is yet to be determined. So what you have to understand, this program accounts from two funding sources. One is County Loving, which with the House to fund Meals on Wheels program. And then in-house dining and the cost of the centers where all these are distributed are actual federal funds. What's happened is that there has been a federal, funds have gone back to pre-COVID funding numbers, so they're not at the level they are today. So if you think about it, if somebody goes back to operating costs five years ago, get your costs go up, you got to figure ways to increase efficiency, close centers. So Connoisseur will be closed for in-onsite dining. There's one, maybe two more in Waukesha County that will also be closed, has nothing definitely made public. I think Mark, they said whether it was six or seven, twenty? And that's going to be reduced. So just so that you're aware, you can kind of tell those that may be affected.
Question three.
Yeah, sure.
So residents here who have been previously to sit, they can go to another county facility to have their lunch?
They can, they can. And there are potential ways in which they can get transportation to have lunch in Berlin or in Waukesha or in Brookfield or in Mesquito, those places. So there are some options. That's one of those things, I think at some point, bring the ADRC here to the council so you have a better understanding of those services that Waukesha County provides to our senior population. Because there's a lot there that usually when I see challenges like this is because of the disconnection in communication, all of us knowing what everybody else is doing busy. So I wanted to bring that in so you see where some of those resources are that could potentially help our community and residents in the future. Like to entertain a motion to adjourn? So move.
Second.
Alderman paper?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone, for coming.